Hafadee and good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the Guam Legislature Building. The Committee on Health, Land, Justice and Culture is now called to order. Today is Wednesday, July seventeen, two thousand and twenty-four, and the time is about two oh seven P. M. In compliance with the open government law, notice for this public hearing were published in the Guam Daily Post and in the government of Guam Public Notice Portal on Friday, June twenty-eight and Friday, July fifth, for a hearing on July eighth at two P. M. That hearing was recessed on July eighth to July seventeen today at two P. M. Due to our being in session at that time. Notices were also sent by email to all senators and all main media broadcasting outlets. This hearing is being livestreamed on the Guam Legislature's YouTube channel. This is a hearing on Bill fifty-one as amended by the committee, which original bill was heard on January twenty-two, two thousand and twenty-four. For record-keeping purposes, please identify yourself before speaking, and we'll try to minimize our distractions in here by keeping the doors closed. After the panel testifies, senators will be able to ask questions. So we have one agenda item, that is Bill number fifty-one dash thirty-seven C O R as substituted by the committee and amended on the floor. It's sponsored by Senator Christopher M. Duennas. It's an act to add a new subarticle three to Article one of chapter sixty-one, Title twenty-one, Guam Code annotated, relative to allowing the construction of accessory dwelling units, A D U, in residential zones. I'd like to, of course, acknowledge the presence of the sponsor, Senator Chris Duennas. Sidozmasi, Senator.
Sidozmasi, Madam--
And so before we--
Sorry.
Yeah, we'll now hear from the sponsor on the introduction of the bill as amended.
Sidozmasi, Madam Speaker, and thank you for holding this hearing and, of course, extending it to today, as you mentioned, due to our being in session. Madam Speaker, I have been in receipt of written testimonies, which will be forwarding to the committee. I know that we have many here that have come today, or several that have come today to testify. Thank you for coming. Obviously, the bill was substituted by the committee, and we were able to debate it for some time on the floor. However, I did get many calls and texts as I distributed the substitute version that had raised some concerns by those who have been taking an interest in this particular legislation. So we'll receive that testimony today. As my simple opening, I'd just like to read one of the testimonies that came to our office from Antonio Gomatalto, and then, of course, open for the panel with your respect. Hafadee, Senator Duennas, please accept this as my testimony in favor of your Bill fifty-one thirty-seven C O R. This is not the substituted version. Thank you for introducing the bill. It's this important bill that provides an additional solution to the housing shortage on Guam. While there are many solutions being offered to address the housing shortage, this particular bill does something more. It provides a solution for single-family homeowner. The Guam Housing Study Needs Assessment, G O R A two thousand and twenty report indicated that there is a need to increase Guam's housing stock. This demand for housing will continue to climb as the military increases its personnel on Guam. Despite the military's efforts to address this through base housing projects, there will continue to be a strain on the local housing market. Additionally, the military construction projects place a collateral strain on construction that leads to the rise in cost of development for Guamanians. Based on the cornerstone valuation, Guam LLC, the median single-family home is four hundred thousand. I believe it's more than that now. And according to the census.gov, the median household income on Guam was fifty-eight thousand, two hundred and eighty-nine. In my humble opinion, the housing demand compounded by the construction cost will only increase this gap that puts this four hundred K price point out of reach for many Guamanians. This bill allows single-family homeowners to increase housing capacity by allowing accessory dwelling units while they're within their existing footprint. Additionally, it provides an additional option for the median income instead of new construction on our island where land available for residential development is limited. As you know, Guamanians comprised of Chamoros, Filipinos and Asian Pacific Islanders have a strong mosaic of family care that evolves into a multi-generational household. These households often exceed the capacity of the standard three-bed, two-bath structure. This bill does allow many Guamanians an option to build an additional unit within their existing footprint that can increase the capacity while keeping the family structure whole. This bill also addresses an option for most vulnerable members on Guam, the elderly and persons with special needs. I am a parent of a person with special talents and gifts. While I hope the social services will offer some solution as she develops into a young lady and an adult, this bill allows my wife and I to take action and provide a dwelling for her. With an A D U, she can live independently and learn critical life skills while my wife and I can be on the premises and guide her. The same arrangement can be used for households to live independently while caring for elderly parents in an A D U. Thank you again for allowing me to testify in support of your bill. This is a real solution, and I hope that all of your colleagues can support this important bill. I am available to discuss this with you in person. Very respectfully, Antonio Gomatalto. So with that, Madam Speaker, I know that we have guests here to testify, and I want to be respectful of their time. I don't have any other comments, and I'd like to hear from those who have come to testify in this bill. Sidozmasi.
Sidozmasi, Senator Duennas. Just want to make a note that the fiscal note on this bill says that the bill is administrative in nature and poses no fiscal impact on any funds of the government of Guam. We'll now hear testimony from those who've signed in. Senator Estevas, former Senator Fernando Estevas from G O R A, Liz Duennas, John Duennas, Neet Munya, and Gina Campos. Senator Duennas, I mean, sorry, Senator Estevas, you may proceed.
Buenos dias, Hafadee, Honorable Speaker, Senator Duennas, and for the record, other members on the Committee of Health, Land, Justice and Culture. My name is Fernando Estevas, the deputy director at the Guam Housing and Urban Renewal Authority, and I'm testifying in support of Bill fifty-one dash thirty-eight as amended on the floor. When I last met with National Governors Association Housing Policy Advisors Network, I was very proud to report that Guam may be following suit on the positive national trend in adopting A D U policies to address housing shortages nationwide. So by no means are A D Us an abstract concept, and I'm grateful to have the opportunity to speak on this subject. So after reviewing the amended version, really don't have many recommendations. So, you know, with that, I'd like to state very key points that were amended into the original bill that I'd like to emphasize that they remain intact when you guys go to the session floor for debate. So for the first one being full support and, you know, request to maintain all environmental protections and standards, as an example, ensuring that septic systems are properly sized and adequate for the amount of people or added strain on the lot. So that's a key component, and I hope that that stays. Also, the next one is the deed restrictions. So the deed restrictions that are put in there are very critical. So there are two key components, then recommendations and best practices that were put in that discussed in those policy meetings, which was one, to ensure deed restrictions remain, and that could be tied certain, right, on properties that have A D Us. And that doesn't mean that an A D U can be split and sold separately. The deed restrictions are usually tied to the owner occupancy requirement. I did see that in a roundabout way, there was a general a general intent to follow the owner occupancy requirement of the A D U, and I'm actually very in very much support on that. I think it's a very unique approach to how Guam views family, where it could be the owner, the property owner, a blood relative, or in other circumstances, a representative, which I think is key, right? So that provides a broad range of people to utilize this. But it's important that those things remain intact together because the one thing that's pretty consistent is avoiding the A D U or A D U policies being utilized by institutional investors, right? And where now you have A D Us, especially in some cities that are facing housing crisis, that are just, you know, another apartment unit that's given special consideration, being charged five thousand dollars a month or something like that. So it's more of a need as an adjunct to the housing crisis, not just to add more inventory, particularly for investors to keep doing what they're doing with the market, right? So no issue with having a rental component. I think that's critical. They do, they should be available for rent, not only to family members, but there has to be that attachment on the owner of the property or family member or something to that, right? To prevent, you know, somebody building twenty houses plus twenty A D Us to go with it and, you know, it becomes a developer's dream, but absent the intent of the A D U, of what the A D U is intended for, right? So I would recommend maybe kind of a language smithing. The bill uses property owner, blood relative, adopted child, reared as a roundabout means of describing owner occupied. So I would recommend maybe adding the definition of owner occupied and then putting all those categories in there and then just utilizing owner occupied further in the legislation. It's going to make it much easier to read and understand, I think, for the people that are going to be utilizing this and pursuing this. So that's one, just a minor recommendation. Additionally, I would recommend just removing any setback requirements and leaving it to the code. So setback, the setback requirements in particular on Guam, as well as the lot sizes, which is discussion for another day, are very antiquated, right? Particularly for the setback requirements, the building code answers all those questions. So any reason, the reason why they had those setbacks was preceding adequate building codes, and they were very generous safety nets. But now with technology, with very strict building codes, issues like having enough separation between houses to prevent the spread of fires aren't even an issue, right? Those are always, those are, I mean, we deal with that every day in commercial building, right? It would only mean, for example, you build a firewall, which is just a more sturdy, you know, on that side of, on that side, that's going to be adjacent to a property. So I would just kind of recommend against micromanaging that in the event that, you know, as we look at additional, updating additional housing policies and strategies to encourage more housing development, more affordable housing, that it kind of just remain consistent with that, and we're not just adding, you know, these old restrictions that have been pretty harmful. So I would recommend amending the language to, which I believe is section one-one-four-one, item eleven. Oh, no, no, I apologize. I believe it's in section one-one-four-one, where it adds, it says that it needs to meet the setback requirements. And since it's already going through a conditional use process, just have it rely on the building code, and that as long as it's court code conforming, then it's not going to be an issue instead of potentially micromanaging how it's going to be built through legislative means, because then that means, you know, it leaves very little room to do any engineering or anything like that to address whatever can be addressed via the code. Let's see. Under section one-one-four-one, item eleven, it includes both, it describes a detached A D U as well as a conversion A D U. There's another type of A D U that, based on the language in the proposed substituted bill or amended bill, shouldn't be an issue either, which are attached A D Us, right? In some instances, I mean, it really is going to depend on the type of structure there, and if all of the same protectionary measures in the bill stand, we should consider having attached A D Us being an option as well. So the three types of A D Us are detached, conversion, and attached. So by definition, in defining A D U, it does leave out attached, but I think it would, you know, barring any additional concerns, which I can't see any, it should be included in the bill and just consider all of them so long as it meets the code and other requirements established in the bill. So just to kind of close and before, and I'll stand by for questions, the socio-economic impacts of overcrowding and homelessness will far outweigh even the wildest concerns about mixed zoning as it relates to A D Us, right? I know there's been discussions of, well, you know, if you add an A D U, then it becomes an R-two in an R-one or an R-two in an A-one. At this point in the housing crisis and the, what I want to say, the many research projects that have demonstrated the impact on communities with housing insecurity, which include but are not limited to, or sorry, let me first start off saying, caused by housing insecurity, defined as overcrowding, overburdened, or homeless, right? Intergenerational households, and I want to very specifically articulate that intergenerational households and overcrowding are not necessarily the causes of this only when it's not chosen. Meaning, as a community indicative or very common in Guam, we choose to live in community with our family members, right? What I'm talking about are situations where families are living together, whether related or households with unrelated people living with them out of pure necessity. In those types of situations, and there's loads of research showing this, and I'll send your, I'll send as part of my submission to the committee those citations. Increased rates of, or decreased educational outcomes, higher risk of homelessness, higher risk of substance abuse, domestic violence, sexual assault. All of the social ills can all be attributed, not directly, but are compounded with housing insecurity. So that being said, I would really like to make that statement that we want to be, weigh all of the different considerations and concerns. And so that is to kind of qualify, sorry, I didn't write my testimony today. It just came for oral testimony. That's why I want to qualify my statement again, that socio-economic impacts due to overcrowding and homelessness far outweigh, you know, whatever concerns there are for inadequate zoning and community planning. Those things can be otherwise addressed. So notwithstanding, generally notwithstanding any disagreements on environmental regulations, nationally, there's a bipartisan support for A D Us, and that's the national trend. And additionally, removing barriers to housing, right? So things like the setback law, right? That really limit creativity, right? Or allowing professionals to figure out how they're going to do it, whether it's to go left, right, up, down, vertical, and just leaving that to the professionals to do that within the building code, right? And so with that, subject to your questions, I'll go ahead and stand by.
Sidozmasi, Senator Estevas, is that G O R A's testimony or your own?
So based on different hats I'm wearing. So one, appointed by the board to kind of oversee housing strategies, serving on, well, one, being one of the representatives along with the Governor's Policy Office for the National Governors Association Housing Policy Advisors Network. And then, yes, as the deputy director of G O R A, who oversees all the housing programs, yes, that would be my, this is my testimony in support.
Sidozmasi. All right, next we have Liz Duennas.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I am, this is a testimony, I am in opposition to the substitute bill as currently written. The original intent of the bill was to help families who wanted to build an accessory building to house family members as well as address the current crisis of our housing shortage. This bill requires individuals to go through hurdles and obstacles presented by the conditional use permit process to get to the actual construction of the A D Us. As written, this process could take up to two years, and that does not solve the immediate need. The people of Guam are already taxed with the increase of construction costs and the inability to find contract workers. Now they have to deal with government bureaucracy on top of the current frustrations. Where does it end? I know originally when we testified, we're supporting the A D U bill, and we felt that it is the means to address our current situation. But Tanwana down the street, if she wanted to build one, is she capable of going through the hurdles that will take up to two years to try to get a permit? I mean, I know there are policies and procedures in place for permitting, but from what I've read from the bill, there's just so many layers that would make it difficult for the common man to go through the process. So the way it's written, I personally am in opposition to it. Thank you.
Sidozmasi, Ms. Duennas, John Duennas. All right, Neet Munya.
Thank you. The Guam Association of Realtors Government Affairs Committee supports the intent of the substitute Bill fifty-one TAC thirty-seven relative to allowing the construction of accessory dwelling buildings, A D Us, in residential zones. However, we object to the requirement that A D Us be allowed as a conditional use in R-one, single-family residential and agricultural rural zones. As you well know, the G O C conditional use process is characterized as follows. Lengthy, a process that takes eight months to over a year. It requires a formal G O C conditional use application, and the draft needs to be submitted to the management for review, which takes over two weeks. Then preparation and submittal. So that means over thirty copies of application must be submitted to D L M to distribute to specific government agencies. There's an agency review committee. Position statements for the A R C, the Agency Review Committee, member agencies do no less than six days after the hearing. A municipal public hearing, which is conducted by D L M. Two municipal planning council hearings and one municipal planning meeting, for which a decision on whether to support or reject application, after which the resolution is issued accordingly. Livestream requirement, and it must comply with the requirement to livestream all public hearings and meetings. Sign-ads requirement, which means we need to fabricate and erect a four-by-eight sign at the A D U property containing all the conditional use information, including dates and times of the public hearing. Notification requirement, providing a personal written notice to all property owners within a radius of five hundred feet of the A D U property by certified mail, return receipt requested. The G O C public hearing, issuance of an affirmative notice of action from G O C and compliance with all requirements prior to the design of the A D U. Once approved, the A D U must be designed two months, then submitted for construction permit two to four months, and then, once the permit is issued, the A D U construction can begin and completed in eight to twelve months. Then occupied, once an occupancy permit is issued, one month later. The expected A D U realization process timeline can be summarized as: Conditional use permit is about eight to fourteen months, say twelve months. The design is about two months. Permitting about two to four months will say three months. Construction of occupancy, ten to twelve months, let's say eleven months. For a total of thirty-two months, let's say twenty-eight months. Who in their right mind would want to go through the protracted and expensive conditional use permit process outlined above, which is akin to subjecting a mouse to travel through a maze just to get the cheese? Without the conditional use requirement, an A D U can be designed, permitted, constructed, and occupied in little over a year. The Government Affairs Committee contends that the conditional use permit requirement is an overkill and recommends that it be deleted in favor of classifying the construction of A D U in R-one, R-two, and A zones as a permitted use. Our association will support that version of the substitute bill. Thank you very much.
Sidozmasi, Ms. Munya. Ms. Gina Campos.
Thank you for giving us this opportunity to give our opinion about the substituted bill. I think the original intent when this bill first came out, I'm in support of that. The substituted bill, I've been reading through it, and it is so complicated. I just can't see that it's going to address the needs of the mom and pops who originally were looking towards this A D U bill to help with their situation. The housing crisis here in Guam is becoming, Liz and I get to deal with it every day from people who call us, and so does Neet, but I can only speak for me and Liz, but we get to deal with this every day from people who call us constantly. And yes, we are a very close community, and there are those of us in the community that, you know, families that want to live together. But generally speaking, these families come to us, and they're looking for a unit that they can share, not because they want to, but because they're at the point where the only way to have decent housing over their heads is to join together two, three different families and live under one roof. It's the only way they could afford decent housing. And for those who are willing to take not-so-decent housing, they can't even afford those units, and there's a lot of them out there. Every now and then, you'll read about them in the paper, or there'll be things filed, complaints with D P W, and we get to read that, too. The original intent of the A D U was to allow families, and I've actually had firsthand experience, but it was to allow families to be able to add to their property so they can house a family member. I didn't even really care who that family member was. It could have been a daughter, it could have been my uncle, it could be my niece, it could be some, my cousin's second cousin. I didn't care. It was just to address the housing situation that we have going on here in Guam. The government really needs to step in and be more proactive. This is not what I can see as being proactive. It's restrictive. I cannot see normal people going in front of G L U C asking for a conditional use permit. They barely are able to go in and apply. I get to work with a lot of self-construction people because they can't afford to hire a contractor, so they want to build on their own. So they come in asking for help. I'm helping somebody right now going through that process. And I actually helped a family last year do an A D U. It wasn't called an A D U, it was just called an attachment. And Speaker Tarlahe, it was a difficult task for them just to get a permit to add on to their building so that their daughter could live there and raise her child. She went through, to build an attachment, you still have to get a building permit. She went through all the agencies. She went through all the agencies. EPA was going to decline her because they didn't want her to add on to her property so that her daughter could live there. So she came in for help, and I went in there to help her. So I can tell you, the process is already difficult. Asking these families to go in front of GLUC, they're just going to give up. So if the intent of this law was to help families, you've taken it away by adding on the conditional use section of the bill. And I also, I'm completely in opposition to filing so that you could have, that it's going to run with the lands. I guess it's conditions, covenants, and restrictions that will run with the land. So, you know, in Astumbo, that property, the Astumbo properties that were under Gura and then sold to low-income families, you have conditions and restrictions there that allow for duplexes on those small lots. But it limits the, it has a condition that if you have a duplex, then you must occupy, the owner has to occupy one unit and can only rent out the other. I understand those kinds of limitations because the families acquired those properties through the government. The government subdivided the lots, put in all the infrastructures, and then sold it to them for cheap. So I get that. But for property that I've worked hard for and purchased, and now I want to do an ADU, and then the government is asking me to put restrictions on my land that run with the land forever, you are then limiting the value of my property by telling me that from now on, there's restrictions on my land. I mean, I understand the part in here that if I'm not going to use it as an ADU anymore, I go back to land management and I report that. But to run conditions and covenants on my property and restrict the value of my land forever, I don't know that I can accept that. The government isn't going to help me buy my land, they're not going to help me build. Why are you then going to put restrictions that run with my land forever? I can't agree to that. And I hope we can consider going back to the original bill. The way this bill is written, you're not going to be able to serve the people that it was meant to help. The mom and pops and aunts and uncles and just family members who are just trying to build something to help. You know that family that I was talking about? She was just trying, her kids were already living in the building, but there were too many of them crowded into one space, so she wanted to add on so they could, the two daughters could live separately. And I'm telling you, the restrictions from EPA, it was a lot. They wanted her to, of course she had to redo the septic tank. Not only that, they wanted her to dig up the original leaching field and substitute the soil there with new soil. And it was all kinds of things. It ended up costing her a lot of money just to do that, but she willingly did it as part of the building process. And nobody's going to get away with, from the building permit process and the observance of the building code, as Mr. Estevas had alluded to, that you can't, you're not going to be able to get away from the building code. You still have to follow that when you get a permit. That alone, my friend took five months to get her building permit. So, the process is already difficult. Please don't add to it. It's not going to serve the people that I believe this bill was meant to help. I know we're trying to go after developers and contractors, but I think we try to go after them to a degree where we're now hurting the people that we are trying to help. Thank you for giving me a chance to testify.
Sisus Massey, Ms. Campus. Senator Duennas, would you like to begin with the panel?
Well, I just wanted to amplify, actually, the testimonies are very similar. I am familiar with the conditional use process. It does take about a year. If you go with just the timelines that are specified by law, you could possibly get it done in eight months. However, you deal with lack of quorums. And I dealt with that personally down in Santa Rita. Took us four months to get a quorum for the municipal planning council. Once that happened, we went through the process, and then it was kind of the mayor's, you know, he forgot to read the open government law, and he didn't livestream the planning council hearing, so he had to go back and redo the whole thing. I feel pretty confident that a conditional use process is at least a year. Will take a year. Not only that, you have to file a formal application. That application has to be produced in 30 copies so that all stakeholder agencies can get a hold of it, read it, there'll be an ARC meeting where all the regulatory agencies sit, kind of listen to your reason for putting, or for wanting to build an ADU. You also have to notify people within about 500, or property owners within a 500-foot radius of your property. Just imagine that, you have a house lot, you're going to put a, let's say, 400 square-foot ADU, and you have to tell everybody within a 500-foot radius of what you're going to do. I mean, it's just, to me, it's just extreme. If the senators can come up with a short process, maybe that's something that could work, but relying on conditional use is definitely a, such an obstacle that I believe that Gina pointed out. It's actually, not a lot of people, if any, will want to go through all that process just so they could build an ADU. They'll rather pile up in a house, which is really where the overcrowding happens. Overcrowding happens when you pack in a house rather than build a separate structure. Building a detached or an attached unit makes it a duplex. I think that was one of the reasons why this ADU bill was specified as a detached unit. I personally feel that ADUs have to comply with the R1 setbacks. I mean, that's my own personal opinion. I believe you need some light and space and airflow between buildings, and I think setbacks guarantee that. At one time, setbacks were actually put, required because of the fire code. You could have fire spread like what happened in Lahaina, you know? Within a few hours, everything will be in ashes. But I believe there are other purposes for setbacks, and I think setback requirements should be kept. Finally, the building code process, the building permit process, excuse me, the process will weed out all the different requirements that you want the ADU to meet, such as adequate sewage disposal. You're going to have to look at the septic tank, maybe you have to enlarge the septic tank. A lot of times, you're going to have to increase the size of the leaching field. That's, has a little expense, but if it's just one leg, one tile for a one-bedroom unit addition, that's not really a big deal. If it's up north and it's over the groundwater protection zone, they might have to put in a type four facility. So I think the building permit process is adequate. I don't think we need to keep specifying that EPA has to agree with what you're going to do because they are already part of the process. And so my, I guess my testimony is to supplement the testimonies you've just heard, which I thoroughly agree with. Thank you.
Sisus Massey, Mr. Duennas, that's John Duennas for the record. Senator Duennas, would you like to be first to discuss with the panel?
Sisus Massey, Madam Chair. And yeah, so the written testimonies that are coming into the office will be provided to the committee, have similar discussion points and concerns. So that will be submitted to the committee.
If I could get those right away? Do you have them right now?
My staff is processing them.
So we could discuss them at this hearing?
Yeah, my staff is processing them. We'll see if we can get it in in time. I had people that called the office because a lot of people were not, you know, people are busy, and they weren't able to catch the recess and the reconvening. So I know I still should have the 10 days, and so they will be submitted to the committee. So Fernando, thank you very much, Senator, for testifying, you know, coming in and speaking to the bill. So in my discussions with Joe Bora and, you know, the like, exactly what was discussed now, that the building permit process will handle, as well as, I agree with what's being said here. That's why I didn't touch setbacks in my original proposal. The setback should follow the law and should be clear that, and then this is why some of the changes I do agree with. It's recodifying, but the sizes, it makes sense because with the sizes, then of course, you're going to be able to meet the setback requirements, and you're going to be meeting those code that, you know, that is mandated anyways. So that makes sense to me. The other thing is on the rental, I already had this amendment prepared for the floor, but, you know, we put this back in committee. But the thing on the rental that will assure that it doesn't, you know, wasn't abused like some other jurisdictions where they were using it for the Airbnb, is that there will be a six-month minimum requirement. So nobody's going to rent, you know, an Airbnb for six months. Yes, John?
Actually, Senator, bed and breakfasts are conditional use.
Yeah, right.
Conditional use, so that has to go through that year process in order to make your, if you want to make an ADU a B and B, you've got a road to travel.
So, yeah, so we have a, I guess it would be an added protection then, just to ensure that, you know, you'd six months. So my, I have a question for you, John, because I think that maybe some people that might be listening might not understand fully. I agree with you completely that conditional use is, you know, improper in this bill as a substitute. But many people that saw the substitute came up to me and asked me, can I, why would, this bill is useless then? Because basically, if I wanted a conditional use for an ADU, I could just go in there and apply anyways and see what my luck was with the GLUC. Would you agree with that statement?
Not really. I mean, the conditional use is a very detailed process. I mean, you're examined, your project is examined by all the government agencies that are quote-unquote stakeholders, and they want to make sure that you meet their requirements. But the ADU is such a personal thing, attached to a family and a piece of property, that it's really, I use the word overkill, overkill to actually have everybody in the neighborhood within a thousand-foot diameter of, you know, or a 500-foot radius of your lot, that everybody knows you want to put an ADU. How big is it? Maybe it's only 20 by 20? And it's just too much of a process. I believe if you follow the zoning code setbacks and you comply with all the agency requirements regarding infrastructure, power, and I believe that what I saw in the legislation was that you have to have a parking space for that ADU on the property. I think that's important so that you just don't flood the streets with cars. That I think that that suffices. I think we want to make this, I don't want to say we want to make the process easy, but we want to make sure that it's orderly and it's well-reviewed on its way to an approval.
So maybe I'll make my point more clear on those who are inquiring. They basically said if I'm going to go to conditional use, then I don't need the bill. I would just go and apply as a conditional use and go through the process. So that's why there was a lot of feedback.
Actually, in thinking about ADUs in future subdivisions, I would like to see a, you know, a special zoning set aside for lots that could have ADUs, and you already authorized them to have ADUs. You don't have to build it, but you design, you design the house on the lot to accommodate an ADU, be easy to meet all setbacks, and that could be done later? Could be done then, or it could be done later?
Thank you. So Fernando, Senator Estevas, I think you asked.
Yes. So I didn't speak earlier to the conditional use process as it was just a part of the bill, but I can't say, based on experience, professional experience, right? Because Gura builds more than anybody else on the island. That's without a doubt, we build. The permitting process is very detailed and thorough, right? Conditional use would be overkill and would be inconsistent with the direction that everybody, every other state is trying to get away from, which is the, you know, death by bureaucracy, right? How we got into this situation is well-recognized. Now, I would disagree with Mr. Duennas that the process shouldn't be easy. The process should be easy, but it should also be thorough. And that's the direction we want to go. How do we simplify it while maintaining the meat and potatoes to make sure it's thorough, it protects the environment, right? Or doesn't harm the environment and just produces. It's just having more common sense policy, right? So really, we don't, we wouldn't disagree with removing the conditional use so long as the permitting requirement stays intact to include all environmental regulations. Now, relative to, or with regard to what was discussed about the deed restrictions. The deed restrictions isn't necessary so long as there remains the requirement for owner occupancy. And that's only really required if they're going to rent the, if they're going to rent the unit. If somebody's building an ADU and they're not going to charge their mom to stay in it, there's no issue, right? But the main thing is to prevent somebody from buying a house, right? Or building a house, adding an ADU, like, let's say I'm a developer, and I have two for the price of one that I'm renting out, right? So the owner occupancy is more important than anything else. So long that that's a provision, you could do it as it becomes the provision to get the license to legally rent it out and legally receive money. Now, if the next owner comes along and says, well, I don't want to rent it out, then no harm, no foul. It's their prerogative at that point. But we just want to prevent the damage of an institutional investor utilizing that as a means to get around general, you know, good community planning and development. So that, I would say, the owner occupancy as using the definition that was, I guess, put into the substituted bill, which could be, you know, the property owner, blood relative, or however you define it, as owner occupied in the main dwelling, is probably the key component more necessary than the deed restriction. And that really should only be tied to if the unit is going to be rented out, not to whether or not they can build it or not, but whether or not they're going to rent it out. That's the main protection.
Yeah, so thank you once again, Senator. And that's the, just to go back to your original point, the original bill was written and clearly stated in the bill that all regulatory processes, permitting processes, must be followed and the laws of Guam. So with that, thank you for your testimony. I'll be following through on proposed amendments that I had actually when we were on the floor. But we'll do that when it gets to the floor. Sisus Massey, Madam Chair.
Sisus Massey, I'm going to suggest that if there's any proposed amendments, that we discuss them today because otherwise, we're going to end up in the same situation that we were, where everybody agrees to allow ADUs. But how we're going to get there, we need to come to a consensus. And I'm, it's very confusing because the original bill first came in and said, this is only for families. We're going to do it for families. So for example, Ms. Campus, what you're discussing with families, that would have applied. But the bill was amended to say that that ADU can be rented to anyone. It was open for rental, and that was one of the concerns that the Guam Association of Realtors and Mr. Duennas brought up. And I thought those were very valid. It's, are we creating a duplex that you're going to rent out? Or is this for family? If it's to rent out, then it's going to change an R1 into literally an R2, right? Where we're renting out the additional unit. And I believe the conditional use permit or conditional use process serves the most important part to let your neighbors know that they're no longer living in an R1 zone. Now we have rental units right next door. That's big. That's a big change, and that was something that was discussed when we discussed the original bill. That's big. That's a big change. And that was something that was discussed when we discussed the original bill. The concerns at that time were that as written originally, it would create a slippery slope, highly corruptible, serve to defeat the original purpose of the R1 zone. And so that's what we're trying to do here is make sure that we're not just, we, we could have done a bill that said, I mean, if we want to change all R1s to R2s, that's one way to solve the housing crisis, right? You just say everything's allowed on an R1 zone. But I don't think anybody's proposing that right now. They're saying we still need to respect your neighbors and tell them what you're going to do in your R1 zone. That's not an R2 zone. In the R2 zone, the conditional use requirement doesn't apply because already duplexes are allowed in R2 zones without going through the conditional use process, right? So that's the difference. I mean, but it's just really in the R1 zones that I'm very concerned. And I think that there, that process should stay intact. And if we can come up with a way to make it shorter or more, you know, efficient, we should do that. But, you know, if we've got municipal planning councils that aren't making quorum or, you know, errors, that's something we have to fix, I mean, down there. You know, that's a mayor's issue. Maybe we need to train the mayors. I don't know, but, and, or the municipal planning councils. But that is again, just for the, the, you know, that's, that's a separate from this bill issue. To me, this bill is really strictly, we're trying to decide, are we going to stick to families? I went and substituted the bill to make it comply with the author who had put in, in the sub, in, in his amended version of, the original bill was for families. The amended bill that I received in my committee from the author was for everybody. We're going to rent it out for anyone. It's no longer restricted to families. So in my sub bill, I kept that. We're going to allow it to be rented out to anyone, but that's where the restrictions come in now, right? Otherwise it's a duplex and you, you should treat it that way or an R2.
One of the feedback, I know that we. I'm sorry. I, I know one of the feedback was, let's say, an individual had their mom. They, the, the, the purpose of the ADU was to extend it so that the mom could stay in it. But then mom passes away. And one of the feedback we got from one of the individuals that testified, they felt like, okay, now mom is gone. I want to rent it to help pay my mortgage. And they did not feel like, why would you prohibit me from now, mom is gone, but now I want to rent it so I could help pay for my mortgage? You know, when we're treading on people's rights, I just.
Well, that's why it was amended, right? So if that's the intent that we are going to allow it for anyone to rent and it's not for families, so that's why I'm saying the realtors need to be consistent or please try to be consistent. Either we're going to do families or we're going to do for anyone. And if we're going to do for anyone, then all the arguments about this is for my mother-in-law really don't apply anymore. I mean, they could, we could, I mean, they could stay there, but it, it's also for rental. So that's what we're trying to prevent is what Senator Fizvez was, was suggesting that, yeah, that's the only reason there are restrictions on.
Well, let me, let me clarify, Madam Speaker, if I may.
No, I, I know what, I know already you're talking about a commercial development, right?
But, but there's a huge difference between an R2 and what we're talking about with the ADU. An R2, you could build an apartment complex. No, but I'm saying as it's written, just speaking, because you said whatever amendments, let's propose it today. I'm, I'm, I'm game for that. But as written, this does not allow for that. This allows one accessory dwelling unit, right? Up to one bedroom. That's it. Which is, 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 is a beautiful median, medium between an R1 and an R2, which is I'm going to build a 21-unit apartment complex. So, but being able to rent that is so important because the reality is, at least based on, on the study and assessment we did, is we need nine, over 9,000 units for our community. Which one?
To rent it.
But it would, it would be to, to a single family. You're talking maybe a, a, a single mother with a child or a couple.
It doesn't say, there's no limit. It just says it can be rented. There's no restriction.
But there's a limit to the construction of the ADU, which is limited in size, yes, but it's also limited to the description of it, which means there's one bedroom or it's a studio with the kitchen. Maybe you have a little living room and a, and a full bathroom. That's it. It doesn't allow for the building of an, an apartment complex, which we would never advocate for that or anything more than the single ADU. This allows for another family to be on the lot and have privacy, whether that's a family member or that's a struggling family who we don't have enough vouchers to give housing assistance to.
That's correct.
Or this or that, to have a chance at having a, a house, which if, 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 it's, it's, it's a very far cry between R1 and R2. And as long as the environmental considerations are made and it can go through the permitting process, there shouldn't be an issue. But if we're going to, you know, mince words on just whether it has an R1 and R2 attached for the ADU, right? We won't have a community left by the time we resolve all the issues on how to get these things done. The situation, Madam Speaker, I'm looking you in the eyes, I'm telling you this, is so dire. I am not against saying get rid of all requirements.
That's why we're trying to come to a consensus, right?
Yeah.
So the accessory dwelling unit as defined by the bill must include a separate entrance, a kitchen and bathroom. It doesn't say, and there was an amendment on the floor being proposed, but not able to proceed because the bill was sent back to committee to, to add to the words wherever it says detached, the word attached. So it could be attached or detached. So in committee, I intend to add that amendment, attached or detached. So that's one issue down.
Yeah. All right. So detached conversion.
These are the minimum requirements. So it doesn't, it doesn't have a maximum requirement or any kind of caps on, on what you can actually build.
Well, well, I, I, I wouldn't be opposed to it. I'd actually support that. Leave it to a studio or a one-bedroom. And we can even support that with data because.
But that's, that's not.
It says it's the minimum. So I think it's.
For, for lots that are at least your version, for lots that are less than 5,000 square feet. You have a maximum of 400 square feet.
Size, that's correct. That's size.
More than that up to, I, I guess a maximum of 800.
Yes.
Which, which is really a studio.
Well, it's size restriction, but it doesn't have any other restrictions as to what's inside except for the separate, I mean, a bathroom and a kitchen.
I want to bring back the point that we are in dire straits.
I understand that.
And, and, and yes, like we're getting rentals to couples trying to live together, two families, because they cannot afford it. So this is a solution. We have to make it workable. Otherwise, and, and if you're looking at it being a rental property, how much can you get for 500 square, square feet?
The amended bill asked for.
So it ha, but that's the point I'm making. It's not a money-making venture. This is a venture to help people. And it's a venture to help move people to rent at a lower rent because they can't find anything. So we're talking about solution. This is a solution.
Can I add one more point, Senator Lahy? You are concerned, one of the things you've brought up, and you've brought this up on other occasions, is that you want to make sure that the people, your neighbors, know that you're getting ready to rent out this unit. So really the, the provision that you're adding in here is only really going to apply to R1 because if I have an agricultural zone in R2 and an R2, I can build 12.
A duplex.
I, I could build more than that. I could build 1,250 square foot per.
That's correct.
So, so there's a formula. So, so this wouldn't, so if you're concerned that the, the developers are going to use ADU or in, what did you call it? Something investors?
Institutional investors.
Investors, that you're concerned that they're going to use this law to build ADU units and just turn around and rent them all out. If I was an institutional investor, I would not be looking for, for ADU. I would look for an agricultural zone. I could build a duplex, up to a duplex on half acre. On an R2, it depends on the size of the land. But I would not then be required to send a notice out to my neighbors that I am now building a duplex and I intend to rent it.
In an R2.
I'm not required to do that.
That's correct. I agree. And that's what the bill does. It doesn't change the requirement for R2. It treats it the same as a duplex, that if you're allowed to build a duplex already on the property, you are allowed to build an accessory dwelling unit on the property in an R2, same.
But, but what I'm, I'm trying to point out is why then if I'm, if I'm building a unit for my family member and the intent is for them to use it.
Because again, we're going back to family when this bill, as amended by the author, went way beyond family. It's not only for family. That's the difference. We could build a bedroom for family or we can build an ADU only for family, but the bill as requested by the sponsor was to allow it to be rented as Ms. Duennas also wants to be rented to anybody. So the family argument is just not.
Yes. And for the record, I mean, I'm the one who made the amendment. So let me, let me, if we want to talk about what's going to be amended, I'm going to remove conditional use. That's going to be amendment I'm going to put in, okay? So let's, let's put it on the table here now for the purposes that were stated here. Now, once again, Ms. Duennas and Gar, I went to the meetings that you've conducted and you had subsequent, subsequent to even before and after this bill was introduced. Most of the realtors that I was talking to and most of individuals I was talking to and families were saying, I need to have a viable option for this bill or for, for, for this unit that I build because it's going to cost me a lot of money as well, even with today's construction costs, that if it's no longer needed for the purpose of my family intent, that I can rent it. Another thing is, because this was testified to as well, another thing is, is that individuals who may be the family that the parents are actually allowing their, their, their family, their young family to use the ADU, they may also eventually, they will eventually, all of us will eventually go see the Lord. So the fact is, is that a lot of people are planning, what they were saying was if I build this ADU, mom and dad are gone. I'm going to move into the main house. I'm not going to be able to possibly afford the mortgage that mom and dad were paying when we built that ADU. So I'm going to need to rent that ADU and not necessarily to family in order to be able to afford to stay in this house because mom and dad are gone, their income's gone. Now I'm going to inherit this mortgage with this ADU on it. So I'm going to move into the main house, but I need this ADU to be rented now so that I can afford to own this house still.
Thank you, Senator. Yes, that's what we're saying. So the bill has been amended and the substitute bill still says it can be rented because that's what.
But you require conditional use, Madam Speaker.
Senator, please, I have the floor now.
I understand that.
So it can be rented and that's what we're dealing with. It can be rented. And if we go back to the original testimony from Gar and Mr. Duennas, it says, it does point to the need to provide more provisions that will set guardrails to assure the ADUs meet the intended purpose and not just another way to make money by creating duplexes in R1 zones. And that's why we have a owner occupied or agent of the owner occupied restriction. And to me, that's the only difference now we're having with duplex zones. So duplex zones currently in R1 must go through the conditional use. And so very similarly is why that provision is in the substitute bill. Yes, Mr. Duennas.
So if you really look at a lot of our different subdivisions, I mean, I, I used to live at Latty Heights. There is no way I can build an accessory dwelling unit on that lot. And if you wanted to, it would have to be at the largest 400 square feet. There, because we are keeping the setback requirements, 10 feet, eight feet, 15 feet in the front. Once you keep those setback requirements, it'd be hard pressed to find property out there where ADUs conveniently fit. So it's not going to, you're, you're not going to see an explosion of, of ADUs and institutional investors buying these lots up so they could put ADUs. I think just if you comply with the setback requirements and meet all the, the, the permit requirements, the building permit requirements, what it does is it gives opportunities for families to build an ADU. It depends on where they live and how big their lot is. And if you go to a standard village lot, you'd be hard pressed to find many that could accommodate an ADU, practically speaking.
If they have to be detached, then you're absolutely right, John. There wouldn't be room.
So for the purposes of this hearing, so we can have the committee report that goes to the floor, you're amending your testimony then, I, I guess I would say, Mr. Duennas, that, that, that you're amending your testimony based on what, the feedback that you got and the like, that you would, that it should be available for rental without going through the conditional use process.
Now, in, I, I guess what, what happens is, let's say you are genuine in your desire to build an ADU for a family member, but that family member either passes away or no longer is with you, or you want to sell your property because you have to move somewhere. Then this issue of rental, and that's what I was thinking about, and that's why I changed my testimony. It becomes, it becomes a quagmire to try to figure out what to do with that ADU once you dedicate it just to a family member. So, and considering that we're 9,000 units short in 2025 in terms of housing, that is a, a way of addressing our housing shortage. And the housing shortage is exacerbated by the fact there are a lot of extended families living in one house because they can't afford to.
And with the number of houses that are needed, we're displacing the local residents because we have military, we have contractors, we have Section 8. And then the regular who do not have sufficient income are being displaced. Where are they going to go? This is a mechanism that would help.
So, so to clarify that 9,000 amount, it's, it's 2027 is the projection, right? It's, but that's from 2019. But 6,500 of that is what's known, known as HUD, as pent-up demand, which means you're overcrowded, you're doubled up, right? You have like four or five people in one bedroom, you know, kind of stuck together. It includes the living room. It's those types of situations that have been proven to be dangerous to communities. But pent-up demand is very specific to those that would move out if they had an opportunity. The ADU does provide that. When, when we, when I, when I discuss about institutional investors, what we're talking about avoiding is, you know, ABC Development out of California owns the main house and an ADU and is renting both out. That doesn't happen with the way the bill is written so long as you keep an owner occupancy requirement, which means as long as there's a, a family member, somebody, your, your, your son, your daughter, somebody within the community, right? A bona fide resident of Guam staying in that house, right? And they're, and then they're able to how, get the business license to rent the other side. Now, that's not to say that a development company can't own the unit. They can just never rent out the ADU for income generating purposes. But as it's written, doesn't prevent, you know, Tanana supplementing her social security income with her son or, or single mother, daughter at $300 a month, right? With her part-time job, able to have a little bit of privacy and space or vice versa, right? A retiree, a widow is in there renting $300 a month from the nephew who owns the house. These are the types of situations we're dealing with. I couldn't tell, we, we could actually provide a voucher to an ADU unit, provided it meets certain requirements. I can't tell you how many people, single mothers, right? Or parents or manomku who have to return their voucher after waiting years on the waiting list because they just cannot find a single unit. Now, good, yeah. So it, it does help. It, it definitely will help. And I don't think it abridges or gets anywhere near what can be done to an R2 development. But the biggest concern I believe is addressed once you have ensured that the septic, either it's sewed or that the septic is adequate size. Because here's a situation we're running into right now. You have a how, a three-bedroom, two-bath house with three families in there, 12 family members with a septic size, size for the three-bedroom, two-bath, right? That septic tank is not functioning the way it's supposed to. And, and if they're over the aquifer, what do you think is happening? So it's, it's, it's more dire than just needing the housing. It's, it's getting out, it's getting these families from these overcrowded, dangerous situations that, that, that I think we have to consider. And that's why I said the socioeconomic impacts of overcrowding and homelessness far outweigh even the wildest concerns around mix zoning when it comes to ADUs. The difference between an R1 and an R2 are words on a sheet of paper. That's really. That's really what it comes down to because you guys have the power to say whatever you want, whether it's an R one, R two, what the zoning is going to be. And I know this body has done it on many occasion, just decided one day this is going to be commercial, this is going to be R one. And this is one opportunity you can, in a careful manner, right? And still subject to the permitting process, make it easier for people to actually have a chance at living here. Because I'm I'm very certain everybody in here, pretty much everybody in here in this room, has the luxury to have neighbors and has a home to live in. And we are just, we're just not seeing that in the community. Most people don't have that luxury to complain about their neighbors or have neighbors. And so, sorry to appeal on that respect.
Thank you. Yes, I I appreciate that. And again, I think if you can hear me, we are all on the same page about there's a need. That's why we're trying to make this huge exception with A D Us. It's an exception to the current law. It's an exception. Whereas they could have used the duplex process, but they're not using that. And at first it was because of the family issue, we were going to make the exception, but now it's not. So let's just agree. This exception is being made now to allow for rentals on your R one zone, right? Without building a full duplex. It's it's short of a duplex and requiring owner occupied. So one of the other things that the conditional use does. And again, we can make that more efficient if we can. I will willing to accept your your suggestions for that. However, it also. Puts these conditions onto the property and it it has a way to actually enforce it. As opposed to building the building and then doing whatever you want with it. So the, and this was actually brought up again on the original bill, again by Gar and Mr. Duennas, when they said. What happens? When, after the permit is granted or the A D U constructed, when the legal purpose is no longer valid and the homeowner wants to lease the A D U? This section specifies that a zone variance or a conditional use permit must be obtained in the original bill. Which is it? According to the testimony, a zone variance or a conditional use? If this is how this proposed law intends to deal with rental lease of the A D U, then pick one. The sticky point, what would be the basis for approving or denying a variance or a conditional use application? And this is what the bill has substituted and amended does. It puts before the Guam Land Use Commission all the conditions. And and that's what distinguished this this exception that we are allowing to increase housing. We're we're going to give them the conditions and allow them to enforce them. That's really.
What would be the condition to approve a conditional use?
The conditions as listed in the bill that they've come, yeah.
I mean, what would the condition be? That you can't, I mean.
That they have to be owner occupied.
Well, the the condition.
The conditions as listed in the bill.
The business license though, Madam Speaker.
The conditions as listed in the bill that it has to be owner occupied, that they have to comply with these other requirements like the. The other zone and it puts them squarely that they must comply with these zoning requirements and.
Well, they already comply with setback requirements.
The answer to your question, Mr. Duennas, is the conditional use that's put into this bill adds A D U to the conditional use law. So everything that you just enumerated in your objection with that Niti read out is exactly what it does. It adds it to the conditional use portion, which I will delete with my amendments.
Yeah, for R ones, which it is already required for duplexes in R ones and actually any other use other than single family dwellings in R one. Every other use must go through conditional use.
A D Us are not, A D Us are a special purpose. Entity and there are size limitations and it has to meet lot setbacks. I think those are the safeguards. I I think once you go through all those safeguards, I think maybe your idea that you have an explosion of A D Us all over the island, I think is unfounded.
Whether we have an explosion or not, it's not really the basis of any of this. This is based on Hawaii law where they saw that abuse as was described. So this is just to prevent it and it puts the G L U C to make sure someone can enforce this special exception.
The A D Us have evolved so far from Hawaii. There have been so many lessons learned. I mean, this is national considered national, this is national at the national policy level. At this time and states are adopting it. And so what we're presenting are all those best lesson learns, like we don't need to take a shot in the dark. We don't need to take a guess of what works or not. The the enforcement provision, Madam Speaker, for the rental part. To rent your A D U is that your it's owner occupied. That's it. So no, no business license, no rental, easy enforcement. If you're collecting illegally, there's already enforcement action to that, right? You you're doing business without a license and there's serious penalties to that, right? So the owner occupancy is only if they're going to rent for money, if there's going to be an exchange of of money. That and I think that's simply put, and that's pretty much already in the bill, but I think the language could be made to read simpler. Now, the deed restriction, like I said, isn't important if there's an owner occupancy requirement to rent it out for money. Rent owner occupancy as defined by the legislature, right? As defined that you you kind of have it in there, right? The actual property owner, a family member who's, you know, who's the one staying there in that unit, which is I think very conducive to our community. But so long as that requirement is there, then, you know, assisting somebody out, a family in need or another family member. For a very modest price to rent the unit, I think is is a great boon on the community. It's it's a great benefit. Provided all the requirements are met that are already required in the permitting.
No, they're not. All these requirements are not right now required, except for this substitute bill. That's where the requirements are coming in.
But the permitting will make sure that those requirements are there. It can. Because if if I go get a permit, Madam Speaker, to go add and say, hey, I'm going to build a one bedroom unit that but that can that can reasonably house. If it's seventy square feet, right? That this is how this is how technical it is. If it's seventy square feet, you could put one person in that unit. If it's a hundred square feet, you could put two, not in the unit, in that bedroom. It's a bedroom fit for one if it's seventy square feet and has a closet.
If it's a bedroom, it's not covered by this law at all.
Say again?
If it's a bedroom, it's not covered by this law.
But you have to understand that there are code requirements, right? The there are code requirements.
Right, and they all work together.
And but I'm saying it's it already exists there. So if you put, if you're going to build an A D U with one bedroom at four hundred square feet. The bedroom size is a hundred square foot, so I could reasonably have two people there. And I have to go get a permit to build this A D U, but my septic, right? If I don't have sewer, my septic is only sized at minimum for three bedroom, two bath. Based on that occupancy, I'm going to have to put a new septic tank in. They're going to have to dig it out, they're going to maybe have to do the leaching field, there's other requirements. But it's a very good and solid process, right? Whereas the conditional use is much more bureaucratic than technical. It's more how I feel, what it looks like, than the technical process of permitting, which is E P A, Guam Fire.
D P W, land management.
Why do you say that, sir? I mean, you're you're saying that the conditional use law that already exists in Guam is junk.
Absolutely, absolutely, because if I'm on a municipal.
That's a whole other bill.
No, 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 but I'm saying anything conditional use really is much more of a feel good. And and yes, it is important, Madam Speaker, by all means to get community input. But we're talking about the, I would I would believe the intent, right, of the conditional use is to prevent. That monstrosity in Saipan, no offense to my 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 brothers and sisters in in Saipan, right? Being put in in Ostumbo Gardens, right? A giant casino gold gilded, those kinds of things.
No, according to Guam's law, the conditional use is to prevent. More than one single family dwelling or gardens in single family dwelling zone property.
Absolutely, absolutely. But it's words on paper. And so my appeal is to the to you as the committee and the body is to, the law is the law until you change it. And so I think the decision point is, if we evaluate what the true risk is. By doing these A D Us, give a good fair analysis, you as legislators, with input from whoever you want, right? Whatever source you would like to go on the impact, the negative impact it could potentially have by having these being done in R one. And you weigh weigh that against the the impact of the housing situation right now, your vote is your vote, Madam Speaker.
So your argument would be, forget about R one zones and rezone everybody's property to R zoom without giving R two without giving them any notice or any input.
Because R two would allow them to build, everyone to build an apartment complex.
Well, R two, whatever they can fit in their thing, right?
We're not advocating that. We're advocating for the A D U.
That would be consistent with what you're saying is because of our housing shortage, we should waive all the rules in R one zones. And that's what I'm saying. We have to have a balance here, right? And we share concerns, Mr. Duennas, and your original concerns. I don't know if they've changed since then that we are going to just go around the rules for R one and actually nobody gets noticed.
But we're not.
You get to put in another rental unit into your property in the R one zones.
But we're not doing that. What we're doing is we're complying, we're sticking with the setback requirements. If you have a septic tank.
But it's still a rental unit, right?
Just listen to me, practically speaking, if you have a septic tank, leaching field, let's use that as an example. And you have it on your lot, you cannot build on your leaching field, so that takes that space away.
I know, but that's not the issue. The issue is not what can fit, because that's already taken care of. It's only what we don't agree on. We don't, we agree whether there's a housing shortage. We agree that we should allow A D Us. We agree they should be allowed for family. But now that we're extending them to rental units, we just need to agree whether. Your neighbor gets notice or doesn't need to know and that every R one now changes into a rental unit zone. That's really the difference. So the to balance that out, conditional use only requires them, as you say, make your thirty copies, go through this process. Everybody's going to know and you're and you're going to be having the Guam Land Use Commission ensure. That the requirements for A D U are met, just like the Guam Land Use ensures. That duplex requirements are met in R one zones, same.
The point where we disagree, Madam Speaker, is you want to put the weight of Gov Guam's bureaucracy, which is exemplified. By the conditional use process on an A D U applicant. When, in my opinion, the practically speaking, it will not, it will not explode the way you're you're.
No, it's not about exploding, even one house next to one other R one zoned house.
And I agree with, I'm I'm sorry, I agree with Mr. Estevez, that that the laws that you write can be changed. And what you're doing is you're changing this to allow A D Us with size limitations.
That's what we're trying to do, yes. Change it to allow A D Us with some kind of reasonable notice to your neighbors.
I don't know how many times have you gone to the planning commission trying to get a conditional, I've done that.
That was.
A lot of times. It takes a year.
Mr. Duennas, this was your concern as well.
And and I'm I'm telling you.
You were concerned with the exact same thing and now it seems so unbelievable to me that now we have no concerns at all as to changing the R one into.
No, it's not, we're not concerned at all. I've already explained to you that. That the present conditions, our housing shortage, the fact that we have to go through the building permit process, which is extensive and detailed. And also the fact that there are size limitations to A D Us, that that takes care of that. My concern was what 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 is the planning commission going to, how how are they going to act on A D U? Do you think they'll say, oh, this A D U, we don't like this, that A D U, we like that one? I mean, that that to me, that's that's the full weight of Gov Guam bureaucracy burdening an A D U applicant. That is not necessary.
Can I propose an amendment is to remove the conditional use, but to meet your concern and add a notification requirement, done. But everything, it's like, okay, we want this, we want this one little piece out of the conditional use permit.
So we're going to change R ones to R twos pretty much for duplex or allow duplexes in R ones, right?
A night and day, night and day.
To allow a duplex in the R one versus allowing an A D U in an R one, yes.
So long as it meets the permitting requirements, why not?
But that's not the bill, that's the thing.
I I know, but exactly.
It was a special exemption for A D Us that can be defined very specifically and controlled.
Because a duplex is has a specific definition too, right? Now, an A D U could kind of be a duplex in a very limited situation if it's an attached A D U. And if you're renting both out, see, I can I can have a duplex and I don't need to owner occupy it. I could rent both sides of the duplex out. But we're saying the difference and and distinguishing feature, Madam Speaker.
Which is what I'm trying to make sure that the G L U C can enforce, that there is a difference.
But they cannot. But there's no, there's one enforcement. The enforcement is done before you build the A D U, Madam Speaker. It's done when they permit it. And if you're going to receive rental income.
It's done on their application for, it's done on their application for use of the property and it's going to be enforced the same way. That all uses on property are enforced.
That's only if there's a conditional use on it, right?
Correct.
There's there's no conditional use if you change the law to allow it. Because again, the conditional use is to.
Then there would be no way to restrict, right, that it to enforce the owner occupied mandate.
I did, I I presented and I proposed as an amendment that there is. It's that Rev and Tac, in order to rent a unit, you need the business license. And in order to get to go through that process, and it's a very arduous process in itself. They have to verify that you are occupying that unit. So there's, it's built in already.
Outside the scope of this bill, the business licenses, this is really just a zoning, it's a zoning thing. What are we going to allow in R one zones? Because of R two, I think we all agree, right?
Yeah.
It's going to be in a permitted use in R two. Everybody agrees, right?
And commercial and M one, M two.
And so it's non-family, it's rented to anyone and all of those concerns we don't have in R twos. It's only in the R one.
Madam Speaker, if if somebody just wanted to build apartment units or rental units. They if they wouldn't go through this process. I mean. They could just build in an R two right now in an A zone, and I think that's your point. You're correct. But the A D U is specific, it it's it's an accessory use to the main quarter. And I think, you know, I think Senator Estevez is correct in in saying that you could just put the restriction. And instead of renting both units, I mean, I think it's already in here that it has to be owner occupied. That takes care of it.
In the bill, but it would be enforced at the Guam Land Use Commission level. That's who's going to make sure that your A D U complies, that it has the parking space, that it's owner occupied.
Madam Speaker, they don't do enforcement. I'll give you, I'll give you.
Well, that's a whole other issue whether they're not enforcing our zoning laws, but that's the mechanism for all zoning laws. It's the same.
But but that's D P W, Madam Speaker. D P W does that.
Ms. Campus, yes.
I'm sorry, for the A D U, regular people are not going to be able or willing or capable of going through G L U C. The people that that we are here investing our time to help, they're not going to be able to do that. They barely can get a building permit as it is.
I would believe you if you that was, this bill was still for only families and A D U units, but it's not. It's for rental units. So it's different.
Madam Speaker, the only reason we're bringing that point up is because. We understand that families eventually die off, move on, get ill, need to leave island.
But there's no requirement for that in this bill, that they're going to live family first and then they die and then you rent it out. The bill, as amended by the author, allows rental from day one, right? So that's what I'm just trying to get you all to be consistent about. That's what the bill allowed. Rental from day one, nothing to do with families or family units. So that was the original intent, but it changed.
I I think I've been pretty consistent, but the idea is that if there's a house, Madam Speaker, we can put somebody in it.
I agree. That's why we're trying to get this passed and we're trying to get a consensus, right? And I think it's a very reasonable requirement.
The conditional use process, Madam Speaker, I guarantee you will eliminate any families. The actual people that the bill is intended to help, maybe you don't believe us because we happen to all be realtors, you you know.
It's hard to believe is because on the original bill, the the. Testimony was very much you need to have variance or a conditional use application. It has to be one or the other. And all of a sudden now, none of those is good enough for this rental unit. It doesn't make sense to me.
Well, not me. I never, I never testified that.
And and I told you that I've that I've reconsidered. And that based on what Gina's saying and based on the size limitations, the A D U is not a threat. And you're looking at it as a potential threat.
But I we put in the size limitation. We put in the size limitations, that's how they get enforced. So all the things that you now like about the bill.
Building permit process, not by the planning commission.
It's one way, yes, but it also goes through this condition, because they're not gonna tell you who occupies your building, the building permit process.
Madam Speaker, you have so much faith in, in taking the weight of government and burdening us by regulating whatever it is that we do. That is not the way to get things done.
That's how we regulate zoning. If you have another more efficient way, please propose it. But that's how all zoning regulations are enforced.
Correct. It's enforced when you're designing and building.
That's, I mean, our law's not perfect. We can make it better. Make it better. Maybe.
That's right. And that is exactly what we're trying to do today. We're making it better for the community. What you're saying is it's better if we regulate more, and I disagree with that.
I'm saying if you're gonna allow a huge exemption, exception to the zoning law, this is a huge exception. You want to make it, let's do it. However, then let's do it with rules, and let's make sure there's a mechanism for those rules to be enforced.
That is what the provisions are in the ADU bill. Those are the conditions.
That's correct. It's written in the bill to be enforced by, just the same as all our other zoning laws by the Guam Land Use Commission.
It is not gonna be enforced by the Guam Land Use Commission. Do those people go out and check?
If it's not, that's, that's their fault. But that's the way the law works.
It is enforced by line agencies.
Not how the government works.
That's not how it works.
Yeah, the land use commu, it's DPW fire.
They're not gonna enforce who lives in the building. They're not gonna enforce all of these things that we've put here in the bill. They don't enforce that.
Ooh, DPW? They absolutely do. Before you get an occupancy permit, before anybody can even live in there.
They're gonna tell you how many people can live, but they're not gonna tell you.
They're gonna ask you for the original plans, Madam Speaker.
Because otherwise they would have allowed it right now, right?
No, because it's not allowed under the law. That's the thing.
That's right. So that's what I'm saying. We're trying to allow it.
When you create that it's allowed in the law.
We're not gonna argue. I understand your point. You're saying, uh, let it go.
My apologies.
Nobody needs to, um, to look at this once the building is built. That we're gonna just trust every owner from then on to follow the covenant that that was how it was built.
Because that's, that's the law.
The business license part is not even dealt with in this bill at all.
It, it's, it's something that actually works. When you go get your business license, they check everything.
Yeah, DPW comes out and checks the rental property.
So if it's not consistent, you're not getting your business license. And if you're collecting on that rental, you better believe that something's gonna happen. And then you, then if your neighbors were unhappy with it, they're gonna report you.
I just find it a little disturbing that every, you two are going to advocate that the Guam Land Use Commission is useless, that they are not going to enforce our zoning laws because they're really the one charged by law to enforce our zoning laws.
They're not an enforcement agency. They're a planning agency.
They are for conditional use permits.
They're not.
Yes.
Madam Speaker.
Land management does the enforcing.
It's not useless, Madam Speaker. It's inappropriate. One at a time. It's inappropriate, not useless. The Guam Land Use Commission is inappropriate?
It's inappropriate for this particular, for this particular use.
How is, well, that's what I'm just saying it sounds like to me. You guys are saying Guam Land Use Commission, under the Department of Land Management, is charged with enforcing all of our zoning laws. But for this huge exemption to the R1 zone, they are insufficient, not good enough, too cumbersome. And that's why I'm saying it doesn't sound that credible to me. So we can disagree on that, and I understand completely that it's a little cumbersome, yes.
Not a little.
But we can. So I'm saying, take care of that. Let's take care of that. How do you expect this bill to take care of whether Santa Rita has a municipal planning council meeting?
Why is it necessary to notify people within a 500-foot radius of your property, your, your single-family lot, because you're gonna be putting an ADU that's 100 square feet?
It's been necessary for every conditional use on property. It's been necessary for every variance, for whenever they go outside of the zoning law.
Senator, it's overkill for such, for a piece of legislation that tries, is trying to help our community. You're just making it impossible to implement it.
Absolutely not.
Yes. Well, well, I will say this, as if it's adding all of these layers.
Senator Estevez?
Yes. Adding all of these layers goes complete opposite to what every other policy and recommendation to remove barriers to housing and affordable housing. Anything that adds time and cost is a barrier to affordable housing. Fact, fact. There's no argument. Everybody bipartisan.
So you want no rules then? Why do we put in any rules in here? Makes no sense, Senator Estevez, because rules are barriers in your interpretation. So we're trying to make reasonable.
Unnecessary rules, and, and.
Unnecessary rules?
And it's gonna be for the.
That somebody gets to review whether they're actually an ADU or just a rental unit?
Yeah.
Yes.
Department of Revenue and Taxation on the business license. That's, that's easy.
That's not how our zoning law works.
But.
Thank you.
I'm just saying, anybody who's gotten a business license understands that it is a pretty drawn-out process.
I do have a business license too, Mr. Estevez, and that's not, they are going to enforce the zoning law. So this law is going to put in the conditions, as was testified earlier by Gar and Mr. Duennius.
Basically, we disagree in our point of view, and I'm, I'm counting on debate on the floor and having other senators listen in to decide whether or not it should be passed into law. I mean, I, I'm, that's.
I agree, and, but I'm also hoping that all of you are going to think about it. And, you know, if we're trying to make an exception to the law, what is the harm in making sure that that, the, the exceptional exceptions?
Trying to change the law. Not making an exception.
We're, we're making an exception in R1 zones as to what can be built in R1 zones. We're changing them from single-family to allowing rental units on R1, single-family residence zones. That's a huge exception, and that's what we're trying to take care of here. In other places, they do it differently, but they enforce these rules in different ways. So having rules is not an impediment, and having one agency or another agency enforce it is not the impediment if they were consistent with the law. It's not gonna be an impediment.
Is it okay we're accused that we have to go somewhere?
Speaker Terlahi, you know.
Um, Ms. Campus.
Um, you know, Senator Estevez is talking about the 6,500 people that are piled on top of each other.
So are we.
What he, what he didn't bring up is the 7,000 military people that the military facility, you know, the military people have already come out and said, hey, they're gonna live off base because we're not building any more houses.
Yes, we had a hearing on that the other day.
So that's, that's a lot of people.
I agree.
You, you know, I, I know your concern about these units being into, being turned into rentals, but we have to accept that, the, the reality, Madam Speaker, and I wish everybody could buy a home and just live in their own home. But we have to accept the, the, the real, you know, reality that a lot of families here in Guam can't afford to buy housing.
That's why we're considering the bill, Ms. Campus. That's exactly why we're here for a hearing. That's why we expedited this hearing. That's why I begged the sponsor to amend the bill since January, and we have been trying to get this done. But I'm trying to make it a consensus as well. So thank you very much. Thank you very much.
Madam Speaker, if we're not, if we're not asking questions anymore and we're just having debate.
Senator Duennius, yeah.
I'd like to close on my bill.
Yeah, I will, if you would allow me to conduct this hearing.
Looks more like a floor debate than a hearing.
I know, because I've allowed a lot of back and forth, which I don't normally do.
Thank you very much. We do appreciate it.
Because I am trying very hard to get a consensus here. And I think that that would be in Guam Association of Realtors' interest to be consistent, to, to support the Guam Land Use Commission, to support the Department of Land Management's efforts to enforce our zoning law. To me, that should be in everybody's interest. Giving notice to your neighbors that you're turning your house into a rent, you're gonna put a rental unit on it, is really big in an R1 zone. And yes, we are facing a housing crisis, and it's even bigger than those numbers that you've said, according to some of the information that we have received. So we are all dealing with the same pressure, the same compression, but I don't think it's time for no rules and no way to enforce. So maybe that's our disagreement of, has you believe this is all going to be enforced in one way?
I don't think it's no rules. I think there are a lot of rules. We're just disagreeing on how to implement it.
Correct. All right, so, um, sorry.
Thank you. Thank you anyway, Madam Speaker, for allowing us. Actually, I enjoyed the debate.
We're gonna now, we're gonna now close. Sponsor, you may close on the bill.
Sis Massey, Madam Speaker, this bill, if you go through and read it, put in the additional provisions. This bill, as substituted, is very similar to the Hawaii law. It put in the establishment of the 3,500, uh, square feet, I believe, or square feet for the, uh, for the 400, and up to over an acre, I believe, for the 800. This bill put in the parking requirement in terms of its substitute. What, exactly. So what we've been discussing in closing, the art, the part we're discussing is that it adds to Guam Cone Aditainin for conditional use now. It underlines and adds accessory dwelling units. When we've gone through and put all of these other provisions in that were asked for, for the size requirements, for the parking, it's all here. If we did all that, why do we need then to go to the back here and add to the zoning law, to the, and add conditional use where parks and playgrounds, hospitals, cemeteries, uh, extractive industry utilities, wholesale, hotel resale, automotive service stations, bed and breakfast, oh, and ADU? And then under section four, uh, conditional use added, duplexes, schools and churches, parks and playgrounds, health service office, utility and public facilities, short-term rentals, accessory dwelling units. Under use permit, one-family dwelling, duplexes, multifamily dwellings, hotels, private groups, institutions, bed and breakfast, accessory uses or structures above, accessory dwelling unit. So what was the purpose of going through and adopting the Hawaii rules and regulations basically throughout this entire bill, only to go in the back and add it to conditional use? That is exactly what has been testified to here today. The overburdening in this position, as well as, I've never seen a duplex in my life that's an 1,800-square-foot main house, and their duplex is a 400-unit apartment-like structure or up to an 800-square-foot unit, which is limited by law, next to a typical house with all the setback requirements. So this discussion of a duplex seems absolutely ridiculous because a duplex under most buildings that I've ever seen are usually equal size to the portions of the house. A three-bedroom, two-bath, separated by a main wall in the middle, and another three-bedroom and two-bath on the side of it. This cannot happen with the ADU law, because the ADUs are restricted by size. This cannot happen with this ADU as proposed because the setback requirements and all the regulatory processes are required by law. So to throw the term duplex, duplex, duplex out in an R1 zone is erroneous on its face because of the fact that there are size limitations and there are all the regulatory requirements to include meeting all electrical codes, meeting all sewer codes, meeting all codes in terms of wastewater. In fact, that's duplicated and written once again in here in terms of the substitute bill. So Madam Speaker, I would hope that we could have this argument on the floor, report this bill out, and amendments can be made, and we'll see where it goes from there. Thank you very much.
Sis Massey, Senator Duennius, and again, thank you to all of those who testified today. Again, this bill, as originally introduced, was for single families to allow family members to add, to add an additional unit to their properties without any real limits in size or anything else for family members. It was then amended by the sponsor to allow rental of that unit to anyone, non-family. The bill had no restrictions, as was testified by the Guam Association of Realtors, no guidelines, no thing for anyone to follow in building these things, no restrictions on size, no requirement for parking, no requirement for owner occupi, occupying of the, of any one of those units. So our committee, and then it was brought to the floor without a committee report because I didn't think with, without any guidelines that it was ready. But it was brought to the floor anyways, and in my attempt to put some guidelines for the Guam Land Use to follow before they allow these buildings, we copied Hawaii's, um, accessory dwelling unit ordinance and tried to put it in here. So that's where we got, and there is no restriction. You, it's gonna look, you can build something that looks like a duplex. It's really just restrictions on how much you can build based on your lot size. If you have a large lot, you're gonna be able to do that. So it's based on lot size.
Look at the lot size.
Yes, I am.
What does it say? 4,000 square feet. Is that a large lot?
It's, it puts restrictions based on lot sizes.
It's not square meters, by the way. It's square feet.
Yes, and it puts.
Those are small lots.
Right. It puts restrictions on what you can build based on your lot size, right? That's what it does, and it requires, Senator, I mean, Mr. Duennius, yes, they are. And it also allows you, I mean, requires that you're gonna follow the current setback for the R1. So it tries to keep the R1 neighborhoods looking like R1 and feeling like R1 neighborhoods and all of the other restrictions that were not in the original bill at all. And it allows this, and this is again, an amendment, as was with the original bill, to add a new subarticle to the zoning law, to allow accessory dwelling units in R1 and R2 and A zones. So if it's in an R2 zone, the substitute bill, as substituted by the committee, that's an permissible use, just as duplexes are permissible in an R2 zone. In an R1 zone, it would be a conditional use, meaning just like duplexes are in current R1 zones, you, you have to apply for conditional use of your single-family lot. And there's a disagreement, I hear that, on whether that should be approved by the Guam Land Use Commission, that you're gonna build an ADU in an R1 zone, or whether we should just, um, get the building permits and then let it go after that. So that's the difference, I guess, is what kind of notice we're gonna give your neighbors, what type of, you know, requirements we're going to be forced to comply with all the way down after we make this exception, after the building is built. And ev, many other states have very similar restrictions like this, where there is somebody to continue to enforce that. But again, we'll continue to accept testimony on this bill. You can submit your testimony to my email address, senatorserlahigwam@gmail.com, or hand-deliver here to Guam Congress Building. And this hearing is hereby adjourned. It is, um, 3:50, 3:53, Sis Massey, 3:53 PM.